All right. I call East Line MacArthur Protection Agency of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. It is seven oh one P. M. I already took the liberty of sitting Ms. Markovitz for Terry Granitek, who is not with us tonight. New business we have. The approval of registrations and issuance of certificates. These each need to be reviewed. First is two oh two Flanders Road, A. M. G. Retail, one, I presume, LLC, number five forty-eight. It is a convenience store, gas station, known as Food Bag Sitco.
This is jamming. Don't do the price of leases.
We're gonna do that in the zoning.
Later on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Ms. Maholland, Food Bag?
Food Bag is a Sitco gas station, a little convenience store. They are essentially grandfathered by fire to the Apple Protection Regulations. This is a renewal of their existing registration. I had Jen send that up to the D. B. P. to the Apple Protection Group up there, which is Gonzalo. She reviewed it, sent it back. She was happy. If you look through the applications, I don't think you'll find an activities list. On that activity list, I think they checked one item, it might be two, when those are the applicants that are per on site, they store the ground gasoline. Today, it's a prohibited use. We wouldn't allow it into that zoning district because it's an anode protection area. If you look at the map behind me, this is the Apple for map, and this is the essentially known as the Gorton Pond Apple Perk, and they are across along Flanders Road, and they are in that area. This is essentially a business registration law. The Apple Protection Regulations have sort of deteriorated many years ago, and pushed by D. B. P. through a new business registration, wellhead protection. The real issue in the Apple Protection is allowing prohibited uses gas stations. Obviously, you could put up food stores above ground tank farms and those kind of activities, so we don't allow them. Deep as mandated this program, who was, you are the zoning commission, but when you sit as the Apple Protection Agency, you are completely different board, and you are in charge of this, these regulations. This is delegated to us. We don't have a lot of discretion. What we're looking to do is just approve this business registration. This one's somewhat innocuous. They don't store a lot of foods other than the underground gasoline and their employees. And that's what I would, and that's all after early on in the Sitco.
Basically, it's grandfathered?
It was originally grandfathered in because they used predated the development of the Apple Protection Regulations as it stated before, around two thousand and five. And just very briefly, I actually have a letter from our town attorney at the county, Mr. Fraser, dating point seven thousand five, which outlines the Apple Protection Agency program prior to us adopting and kind of laying out what we needed to do, what was going to happen, and we did what. And it's come from the files today, and I see I've just probably kept everything very clean. But I think the most important thing is for you all to, somewhat familiar with this, you know what the future of the program is. And we're only doing three tonight. We will have more coming. These are the first three that came up, and Jen has kind of put them onto that and brought them forward. All the applications are slightly different based on the information that they're giving us, but also based on the activity that occurs on the site. You can see on the other two, they do other things than just, they don't pump caps, Sitco does, so they're in it because they have underground tanks. In the big picture, D. B. P. would come right down, and they essentially run the program, looking over our shoulders, so we have to take them. Because of the needed staff, with Jen and I kind of monitoring this, we send everything up to them. They take a look at it, of course, and we have a good relationship, so they look at it, so it saves us a lot, and we send it back.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland.
Who checks that river in back of like Go Motors, along Flanders Road?
Checks it in terms of what?
Who does?
In terms of, what do you mean by checking?
See if there's a sheen of oil or anything underwater.
Well, what happens is we respond to complaints. That is, sometimes it's the inland wetlands agent. I might look back there, but more likely it's gonna be the inland wetlands agent who monitors the inland wetlands and the streams, et cetera, et cetera. There's so many people in town, there's a spill or something, it's gonna come over. Or the property owner of the user is gonna call in. They're gonna call. He does not figure out if there's a spill.
No, he is. Two years ago, I reported that I saw a sheen on that river.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you.
So I was wondering, who the hell is supposed to be doing it?
Yeah, well, there's nobody that's supposed to be doing it.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Nobody's supposed to be spilling anything. Like, supposed to have any leaks. And usually they'll come up, and then, for example, our diurnal organization, they had a call a couple weeks ago from D. B. P. They got a complaint about a stream somewhere. He went out and blocked it, and D. B. P. came down, and they blocked it together. And they, they found that there was a little break out somewhere, and there was a little soil getting into the stream and working its way down, a little discoloration. So they resolved that problem. So we're all kind of, when we're all out, we kind of keep our eyes open. Then, you know, we may be our friends in engineering, and we think, hey, thanks, we'll go check. There's a lot of eyes on us.
All right. Can we get back to Sitco, please?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Do they have some expansion plans? Would, would those plans be inhibited by this?
Um, no.
But if they wanted to add more pumps?
Well, if you add more pumps, they can, unless, well, they may be able to add pumps, but not gallonage. Because if you're not adding underground stories, I've gotta go back and refresh, but I think they allow more pumps to come from that same tank.
Yeah.
But they would need a permit, so much, so that, I review for much. They have been in the seeming, and their first effort did not, did not pass much. And they went to C. B. A., and they withdrew from C. B. A. because they wanted to put a drive-through into coffee, and because they bought a lot next door. And the dimensioning in their just didn't allow it. And there's only rates that allow drive-throughs within the hicks of attitude. So they withdrew when they realized that they weren't getting.
So no more gallonage, that's all?
Is my understanding, but I would want to refresh before I sign off on that. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve renewal application and issuance of a certificate of registration to two oh two Flanders Road, A. M. G. Retail, one, LLC, number five forty-eight?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, abstain. Motion carries six zero zero. Next one, two fifty-two Flanders Road, Monroe Brake and Tire, number four, excuse me, one four five zero.
Previously, mine's not.
This company is an automotive repair shop, primarily doing brakes and tires. Mr. Maholland?
They do store some fluids, they have minor gallonage on site. You will find certain transmission fluids, transmission fluid, motorized and brake fluids. They were part under the Apple, they have a deep inside, and I saw them in a, in a certain container, and those containers are picked up regularly by a certified company that exposes those materials. They've also been grandfathered and doing those types of repairs for a generation or two. We sent that one up to D. B. P., and they were fine with it. We look at the activity list in their application, and I think they have checked off that they're automotive, and they have some fluids. So that's essentially it on, on that. This is not Stop and Shop Gas Station Park. This is just the monitor.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Nobody? Good. Do I have a motion to approve the renewal application and issuance of a certificate for two five two Flanders Road, Monroe Brake and Tire, number one four five zero?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, abstain. Motion carries six zero zero. Number three, one eighty-four Flanders Road, Go Motors LLC. This company is a general automotive sales and service repair shop. Mr. Maholland?
As noted, they repair motor vehicles in a cell or the used to a vehicle. They repair internal combustion engines. They have some waste, there is gonna be, once again, oils, paint, food, and similar things. This use has been on site with another name for a very long time, about two years ago, I think it was Niantic.
A. One.
And before that, it was Niantic.
Tamper's, RV Tamper's.
Yes.
Didn't grandfather it there a long time.
Yeah, and they continue to, they do the same thing with their, their fluids. They put them in a special container. They're picked up by a certified operator, and it's exposed. And that's required by D. B. P. regularly. And D. B. P. will come down and they do spot checks on them, as long as we do from that.
I just have a question, because I'm new, and the, really quickly. The paperwork is different. The application is, okay, so.
Every operator will kind of give us what they think they want. And this one as well, then up to D. B. P. Some are more thorough than others, but what we're really interested in, we know what the activity is. What we're interested in is, is everybody know what they're doing, and the outgoing guy, if there's a problem, and what you need to do. Some people are more thorough than others.
Yeah, because on this application, it doesn't state that, but the others, they did.
Right. And that's why we send it up to D. B. P. Are you okay with this? And of course, we're all kind of looking, and I think, you know, we've all been in, we've been in all of them, some that have found inside.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland. Do I have a motion to move to approve the renewal application and issuance of a certificate of registration to one eight four Flanders Road, Go Motors?
Approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, man. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, abstain. Motion carries six zero zero.
For those who are interested, this is the Apple Protection, and we listen to stuff foods in my office. You're welcome.
Do we have to read it in your office, or are we allowed to check it out?
Well, we can in the office, but it doesn't give you.
No, it did not.
Of our side.
It did not.
They're hard to get.
When I looked at it, I didn't either.
Thank you, Mr. Jen. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland. On my agenda, it says approval of minutes of September eighteen, excuse me, September twentieth, twenty eighteen. Are they in here? I can't find them.
You should try. They might have overlooked them, or wouldn't be able to find them.
All right, so then what I suggest we do?
They're, they're online, actually, because I read them.
All right.
So you're gonna file them, correct, from this meeting?
Yeah.
And send them out. Jen will send them out.
What is that?
The next condition.
From this meeting. Well, then, I suggest we table this vote for the approval of September twentieth, twenty eighteen. Anyone have an issue with that?
I thought we met more recently than that.
Yeah, so I.
I agree.
I'll check.
Yeah, check that date, too, please.
Couple of years ago, I know, there was a bunch in the industrial park that we looked at.
So then we'll check on the date, and then move on from there, Mr. Maholland?
Yep.
Thank you. With that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting of the East Line MacArthur Protection Agency on March seventeenth.
I know that we table and the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Recording. I now call the East Line Zoning Commission regular meeting of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two to order at seven thirty, excuse me, seven twenty-seven. Stand for the pledge, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
You guys are quick. Tenants, myself, I'm here. Mr. Dwyer is here. Terry Granitek is not here. Debbie Jett Harris, Mr. Peck, Ms. Thurlow is here. Jay Ginsburg is not, cannot make it. Ms. Markovitz is here. Mr. Schmidt is here. Mr. Maholland here. Sue Spang is here, and Ms. Hardy is here. I took the liberty of sitting Ms. Markovitz in the absence of Terry Granitek, so she is joining us as we speak. Public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so move on to the regular meeting. We have approval of the minutes of February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, abstain.
Abstain.
Motion carries five zero one. Moving on to old business, we have none. New business, which is all the outdoor dining renewals, which are scheduled for public hearing on April seventh, two thousand twenty-two. We have the application of Eugene Imini for Black Point Pizza for renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at forty-four Black Point Road. Application of Edward Martone for a special permit for outdoor dining at eleven East Patagonia Road. Application of Scott O'Reilly, owner, East Line Cafe LLC, D. B. A. Smokey O'Grady's, for a renewal of special permit for outdoor dining, a property identified as three zero six Flanders Road, Niantic. Application of Five Churches by the Bay for a renewal of special permit for outdoor dining, a property identified in the application as two fifteen Main Street. Just to make a note, they are a new tenant for an existing property. Application of Harry Intrifanis Longenitis, D. B. A. Family Pizza, for renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining, a property identified in the application as two thirty-three Main Street. Mr. Maholland, you may want to make a note, I believe the owners have changed on that.
Yeah, I second it. It may actually be on the application. I think Jenny have just downloaded from mine.
Understood. She's got a heavy plate. Understood. Number six, application of Leo Roach for Strive LLC, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining, a property identified in the application as two forty-seven dash two Main Street, Niantic. Application of Teddy Enatitis for Main Street Grill, for a renewal of special permit for outdoor dining at two fifty-two Main Street, Niantic. Application of La Llorona, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining, a property identified in the application as two sixty-seven dash two eighty-three Main Street, AKA thirteen Hope Street, Niantic. Application of Steve Turner for Lillian's, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at three seventy-four Main Street, Niantic. Application of Costas Anastasio for Niantic Dyna, for renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at twenty-six West Main Street. Application of, I apologize, Deja Auguste, for Niantic Pizza, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining, a property identified in the application as fifty-three West Main Street, Niantic. Application of Steve Caprentieri for Niantic Bay Inn Incorporated, AKA Lime Tavern, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at two twenty-nine West Main Street, Niantic. Application of Jennifer Vellin for Rosa Negro LLC, for a renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at two one four Flanders Road, Niantic. Application of Candace Devon Ditas, Kevin Ditas, for Devs on Main, for renewal of a special permit for outdoor dining at two fifty-five Main Street. Mr. Maholland, you took the liberty of scheduling that already.
We have already scheduled that. If anybody thinks we don't have restaurants and outdoor dining.
I say we do, and I apologize for the names that I messed up there.
The Devon Ditas, that's not a renewal, is it?
Yeah.
It is. She was approved on the condition of finishing the outdoor fencing area before she applied for another one. Remember?
No.
Yeah. Yes, so that's a question I have as well, which I've already spoken to.
What you cut was temporary.
Yes. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. So she has to do something there. Moving on, any business on the floor, if any, by the majority voted the commission? Speaking for myself, and Mr. Maholland, and would like to bring up something to the board, if I may. As you know, the P. O. C. D. just came up with their twenty twenty pamphlet, I guess you may say, or regulations, whatever. They put together what they call a matrix, which is basically, I would assume, Mr. Peck, like, ideas and thoughts that they think that other commissions should be involved in assisting.
Yeah, they gave us some.
Going from that, right. So Mr. Maholland and I met with them last week. Mr. Peck was there, obviously the old commission there. And going through this, there is something on it that we could possibly look into that would assist them. I presume it's to, you know, aid in the future process of the P. O. C. D. Right, Mr. Peck?
Well, every ten years, they come up with recommendations and reasons why, conditions of the town. This matrix is a, just an outline, a list of all the recommendations for each commission in town. We have our list. We, you and I thought, would choose two of the ones on the list and at least talk about them.
Correct. And the one that I found out, what is on this matrix, is they have it as a recommendation, which reads, "Consider a rezone of the current Flanders Commercial District on Boston Post Road from Chesterfield Road to the west as C. B., or given a new development designation such as Flanders Village District, or F. V. D., with regulations that encourage redevelopment to improve upon the village concept. As in the existing C. B. zone, new buildings in this area should be located near the front of the parcel to emphasize both visibility for new businesses and enhancements for pedestrians and vehicles trying to access the property. Incentive-based zoning should encourage property owners to locate parking to the side or rear and abide by the architectural regulations," that's a key word right there, "or recommendations which complement existing historic structures in the area and use variations landscaping alternatives to complement both the site and the structure." And as, you know, most of you know, or will, will know, that that area basically up that end of town is a C. A. district, which really does not have architectural guidelines, excuse me, as we, as we do down here in the C. B. in the Niantic Village District. So I think we could take a step forward, whether the commission moves forward with a program in the terms of a subcommittee, or we put it on Mr. Maholland, or ask Mr. Maholland, if he could adapt some sort of regulations to make the C. A. and C. B. very similar, or do we want to see it as, you know, like we have the Niantic Village District, we want to see it as like a Flanders District, to bring the similarity between the two?
I think it's an excellent idea. It's that end of town, it seems like, is always trying to connect to Niantic, and it would be so cool if they each had their kind of own identity and look about it. I think it's great. We should do it.
Okay, Mr. Jen.
Well, just one sec, please. Mr. Peck, can you elaborate a little bit for me on that?
Well, just with my opinion, that whenever you do a zone change, you are possibly getting into some trouble. And since our objective is to put in architectural review, as we do in the C. B. zone, I think that's all we need to do, is to take the C. B. architectural guidelines and put them where we want to put them, in Flanders. And that won't take much. We already have the verbiage. If we all agree that, I guess the question is, do we do the whole C. A. zone with these architectural guidelines, or just from the Chesterfield Road to the lake? Personally, I feel just from the four corners to the lake, that's, well, there's not much left of the old buildings, but it's still salvageable, I guess.
You're doing something that I'd have to do a global zone if we're doing a limited like that. In my opinion, based on my experience, this is my view. You're, you're almost, you much of the C. A. out in that area, it's not that big. I would apply it to all the C. A. that's up to me, including one fifty-six. We already spent a great deal of time on architecture when developers come in or somebody wants to review a building, and we do a lot of asks, and we've been pretty successful. By putting in the architectural review, it gives us some real teeth to say, that's nice, but we really want you to do this. And the architecture is done in really three levels. The easy stuff comes to me, then there's a kind of mid-level where it hits a certain threshold, it comes to you, and above that, new buildings, they go and come to you. And we're gonna meet with them, and we're gonna kind of have a couple of, you know, get it pretty close to what we think, and then we're gonna come in, go, this is what the applicant's thinking, this is where we've gotten, what you all think, and then do a little checklist, and we're done. So it gives us the teeth to say, you're not using texture one eleven.
It'll basically stop them from putting up a big box, more or less.
Essentially stop them from saying, we don't care what you think of yours.
So we don't need to have a village, like Niantic Village?
Well, the most, the quickest route is just, as you have noted, is just to put the design in. Immediate four corners is not pretty good, I think. Yes, we like a little one landscape.
Except for the tree under the wires.
Yeah, maybe they should bury the wires.
True.
And, you know, that's where I'm gonna go on that. But I think we've been pretty successful. There's room for approval. One of the things that we need out there, and I'll share this with you, I've got an application coming, and you're going to see it, and it's for an info project for about eighteen senior housing units. Got a good architect, it's nice. But where it's located, there's no sidewalk to immediate four corners. People gonna move everywhere, they're gonna follow this.
Hmm. No sidewalks?
Now, on the south side of Boston Post Road, in that vicinity. So we get time, I know we have code funds, so maybe that's something we should have looked at, or should look at. There's still time to say, you know, let's build a four hundred feet sidewalk in that area, facilitate people walking. We're gonna do design, and we're talking about creating a village district out there, and in the big picture, we talked about it for a long time. It's happened already. It's there. We just need to link it with things like sidewalk, encouraged by landscaping.
Oh, sidewalk, definitely needs to be there.
As part of the corridor study that Gary's doing and planning for Flanders Road all the way down, you know, part of that's gonna be sidewalks and landscaping. We love trees, street trees, and of course, our friends at, at the power company hate street trees, you know, so there's always out rubbing, you're always trying to find a way to get them in, maybe sure enough, he's on one side. But I think we're almost there, and we've talked about these concepts for a long, long time. Gary and I have had a great deal of kind of kicking stuff around like that. And I think overall, in my opinion, it's time and place to put it in the C. A. zone, to give us more teeth when we are dealing with people. This town's been discovered. They're going to continue to come and knock down some of the older buildings, and we at staff level need some teeth to work with.
And that would help us keep out the big box stores?
Keep out the big box.
Yeah, you really can't keep out anybody if they meet all the criteria.
But you need condos down there.
Property owner rights in Connecticut, you have a right to develop your land, whether we all like it or not. And often, I approve things I don't care for, and you have done the same over time.
Even if you put on a cupola?
Even, well, we like cupolas.
We love the cupolas.
But, you know, your need to visualize them would enhance our ability to do better and to ask more of the developers. And once the developers realize that it's there, they're gonna say, okay, and they're gonna come in and I'm out and commit. We've heard about it all. Here's our best effort first. So it doesn't take six months to go round and round and back and forth to try to get to a place that is a little better than what we were originally.
So summed up in a nutshell, then, it's basically a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
So I guess my question to the.
All those ideas, the, the solution, and it will do the same thing. Because rezoning, as one spoke about, creates a lot of other issues. It creates nonperformers, then you can't expand your business, you can't expand your building if you become nonperforming because this commission enacted a rule that did that. So it's not that easy to change the zone. Can you do it? Yes, but then there's all these repercussions you need to think through before you do, and we may adversely affect many businesses.
Can't we get one of those Yale reviews that, like we had down, for downtown? Can't we get one of those Yale reviews that, like we had down, for downtown?
You, you don't need it, you already have the design regs, they were already there. Yours is not going to help you do anything. Those regs are in place.
So the basic question that I would have then, is that design architecturally in here, going to be the same design architecturally for there?
Yeah, you can-
So we're basically just going to move these?
You're just going to add C A.
Not move, but add them to C A.
You're just going to add C A until those regs become in effect. And in the interim, I will go in and go through them and make sure we're not missing anything when we add it to the C A, just to double check.
Thank you, Mr. Mulholland.
You're welcome.
And so I, I take it that the commission is on board with this?
I am.
Right? So, I guess we will ask you, Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
To carry this on?
I will.
We don't need a motion, do we?
Excuse me, uh, Bill mentioned, uh, another charrette. We, uh, the plan of conservation and development basically had a charrette. There were meetings, uh, there was surveys sent out, which was, a lot of people responded to. Real, a lot of, uh, public input went into this P O C D, uh, report, so... But the downtown merchants are still going to have another charrette.
Right.
At their own, on their own dime.
So basically, Mr. Dwyer, there already was a study, so, going from there. So, I don't need a motion to have you do that, right?
No, I will do some work, report back to you in two weeks.
Then obviously, we got to make a motion to change the tax amendment.
Oh, that'll be a public hearing.
Correct.
Instead of, so I will put all that together.
And then we move forward from there.
I will do a review to make sure we didn't overlook anything. I'll report back in two weeks, and this can go very quickly. We can get the hearing in probably 60 days, which is pretty quick in the city.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mulholland.
You're welcome.
Um, also on the same note, um, Mr. Peck and I discussed the other night about increasing the industrial zone. You know, the industrial zone now here in town is pretty limited in what we have left. So there are a couple parcels in town that basically, you know, we'd like to look at to see if they are feasible to do so. Obviously, the best route of access would be close to 95 in terms of entrance and exits and, and such like that. So it's one of these things to where, you know, they just need to be walked and researched a little bit before we can go any further with something like that. So that is something that we're also going to move on, if-
That's a good idea.
Good with that?
Can we see the parcels?
We're not sure yet. I mean, we're talking, like, right now, one that sticks out to us is off of Society Road. But, you know, the state owns a lot of property there, and there's also some private owners there that, you just have to see if the land is feasible. You may.
I think it's in the what-if stage.
Yeah, it is, exactly, it's in what-if, what-if stage.
So a little research, a little homework, and say, okay, maybe this is work for some further.
Like, as I discussed with Mr. Mulholland the other day, like, he talked about, you know, moving, you know, the campground, especially used to light industrial.
Yeah.
But personally, I'm not a big fan of that one, but-
The paperwork that you have is, since I was, I'm new to the, can I get copies of that? So I, when you guys talk about it, I know what I'm talking about.
I would imagine so. Um, I cannot provide one with you.
Michelle Williams says, you can get one from Michelle Williams.
From Gary Geisell.
Gary, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Jen can get me, okay, I'll talk to Jen. Thank you.
Michelle, actually.
What annoys me, but, um, is the, the Morton House signs, just to change the subject. They look terrible.
Joe the plumber?
Well, the plumber thinks they're beautiful.
Hey, you don't know Joe.
Yeah, he's in my office there.
They're legal, but they look terrible.
Um, how shall I say?
There's probably another sign coming, right?
They're legal, but, um, well, the whole block-
Yeah, but-
Needs improvement, let me put it that way.
That's like the premier court.
I know, right?
And it says Joe.
Yeah, had the vision there, look at the sea, and then you look on the left, and you see these crummy-looking signs.
The ownership is not, is not open to selling his property at this time. I'll leave it at that.
Right. And as you heard in, uh, all the applications that I read, there is somebody applying for an outdoor dining permit there, which means there will be another sign going up, most likely, which will tie it all together and probably make it look a little bit better.
I hope it looks better.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it will.
We're trying to get them to put flower boxes under the sign.
Hey, they painted it, they, you know, they straightened, it's, it's better than it was, just for the record, so.
You're right about this.
It's not better than it was.
Yeah, well, they were just too old there before.
It's worse than it was.
Well, I think it's important to, to do that, because the businesses that we have are putting a lot of money and a lot of effort into, for the outdoor dining, and to give a great experience for people that live in this town and people that visit our town, and we want it to look nice, you know? So I think that those changes are valid.
I will just-
No, no, no. You're absolutely right, but they look terrible.
Yeah, they do.
It's helpful. You notice the two, Joe the plumber and, and the floor folks, they put a couple hideous doors in to, in their building. I had them change the wall glass under architecture deal, without it, I couldn't have done it.
Can they fix, can you get them to fix the sign?
Well, the, quite the problem is, you may like those signs, Billy may not, I may not care, five other people like them, and ten other people don't, what's right, what's wrong?
It's like asking somebody to change their mailbox, because you don't like it.
They don't like the color of their car, but it's a car.
Well, not exactly.
When we try, I mean, not everybody's going to put in a carved sign, a carved wood sign.
We have a, uh, we have a sign from the 1800s at the Lee House, Morton, Morton House sign.
Well, maybe we should move that.
Well, I do remember whenever I had to get a sign for Pine Grove, you told me I had to bring it to you and show it to you for approval.
Yes.
Well, how come their signs didn't have to have approval?
They did.
Oh, okay.
We don't control signs, just for the record.
I don't necessarily find them attractive, but I don't get to judge on the sign. What I get to judge is the size.
It's legal, yeah, got it.
Sometimes the colors.
But you can hint.
I can use it all day long, and sometimes they tell me what to do with that.
Moving on. Zoning official, Mr. Mulholland.
Um, I think I'm good. I don't have much stuff, but we're pretty busy at our level. I will report to the building inspector, who's doing very well, very pleasant guy.
Interim building inspector.
Interim building inspector, and, uh, assistant, and we're helping him get going, so, uh, he's moving along. And, uh, he's very busy, we're busy, we got a lot of things going, uh, trying to wrap up Rocky Network, uh, got the worries about now, uh, but for that, we'll get it resolved. I don't have a lot for the commission this spring, which is interesting, and, uh, you know, sometimes-
What you had to meet today?
Probably prices and everything, probably, you know.
Well, it's sometimes, you know, developers are out there doing, investors are out looking, our town is still has a lot of under, undervalued properties and maybe not the highest investment uses. We may think they're fine, but outside folks see an opportunity, so you still have some of that going on. A lot of residential stuff going on, uh-
Lot of residential.
Black Point, there's some beach, New Black Point, uh, building away up in the subdivision off Boston Post Road, they should continue to knock them up. Um, so we continue to pay attention, and, uh, phone does-
Who was the planning unit?
Is that still going to plant trees in that one area?
A lot of them, you're asked, what are you going to do? He's not here. He's pointing, like, when you asked of us, we got you open, what are you going to do this year? Or is it, you're going to come and tell us that you want to keep that? Which she has a right to. So we'll see, but I will be, I'll visit.
Uh, Bill, question? Uh, hey, I sent you an email regarding affordable housing plans due deadline June 1st.
Yes.
What do we have to do?
We don't do anything. Um, planning's handling that, uh, Gary goes through handling that, I'm on a little committee meeting on that, they invited me. We met, I think, last Monday, uh, they apparently have some funding, I think it's about 16,000. They're going to hire an outside company. There are two companies that applied, uh, at the committee meeting, um, sort of an organizational meeting, uh, I think it was off to a slow start, I kind of jumped in a little bit. And, um, I think that the question was, if, if you have two companies that have offered themselves up, and you need to interview these folks, and they need to develop some questions for the interview, and some criteria that you think you're interested in, and they look like they're pretty equal, and in the end, what you really have to understand is with these type of companies, the lowest guy on the total pool gets to do the work. And he ends up calling up our corner, and those two will probably put it together with supervision from the principal of the company. So that's moving forward. They're getting ready to set up these interviews, that'll be another meeting, and then they'll decide which company that company's going to win, it's a timeline, it's in-
Coming up quick?
Yes, coming up quick. They've already got a schedule, and they're going to do, the deliverables are before the deadlines. You can get an extension from the state, that may need to be asked, but it's all under control, they are going to do an update, you have an existing affordable housing plan, and they're going to just update it, so it should be sort of cut in place, to meet the state obligation. That's where it sits.
Do we get a crack at it when they present it, before it's presented to the state?
I may be able to go to the meeting, we've got to look at that section, but I think you could-
I'd like to look at it.
Then you could have input.
We can't speak at other land use meetings.
Right, so, um, you might want to write up your opinion and, and, uh, make sure it lands in the right place, with the staff number, one of two, or two of two.
Well, you, can you get them to bring it to us prior to the final approval?
I don't know if they need to, that they have to do that, we could kind of make sure you see what's going on, I can keep you abreast, if I have something to be on the campaign and that, and I can pass out the stuff.
I mean, since we're going to be, run the show, once this thing is enforced, we ought to have a crack at it.
I get that piece, so let me work on that, and I will report back to you, to you all.
Because I thought they were supposed to reach out to us for some input.
Uh, it's an update of the plan, we didn't get that charge out first, I thought it was going to be us, because us, we have the regulations in place, we get the applications. We, you might want to know what we think, since we have all the experience, and I think that's obvious, why, why, I mean, I think we've done, I don't know, 14, 15 affordable applications, some with groups, some we've denied, some we've input, some we've amended back. Um, we have a lot of experience, and several of our digging staff. So I will report back to you. Me an email out of my office, so I will try to do a first case, probably sometime next week, Monday, Tuesday. Um, our planner is away, and I will return Monday, so probably be booked on Monday, but Tuesday, I'll try, see what we can do. Proud of you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mulholland? We're good? Moving on, comments from Exavicio, Ms. Hardy.
So, of course, it's budget time, and, um, budgets have all been forwarded to the Board of Finance. They are beginning to have their meetings, and, um, remember that the, um, budget, the town, there's a town budget and the Board of Ed budget, but they're voted on at the same time, when you go to the polls. Some towns have it separate, that you vote separately on Board of Ed, and then you vote separately on the town side of the budget. Uh, our charter's set up so that it's one vote. Needless to say, there's, there are increases, particularly on the Board of Ed side, where they have, they, where they are hiring a lot of additional personnel to deal with student-related issues related to the COVID, uh, mental health issues, some extra, um, nursing, health aid staff to deal with problems such as that. So you'll notice that there'll be even a bigger split between the two budgets, uh, in terms of money and increase. Their budget has increased considerably more than the town side. So, uh, as I said, Board of Finance, I haven't seen the schedule yet for their hearings, but, uh, I'm sure that will be publicized. Most of the hearings go right on, go on during the regular, uh, board meetings, so it's not that hard to follow the schedule online and see which budgets are coming up for review. Uh, last night, the Board of Selectmen heard a very extensive report on, uh, the A R P funds. Uh, there was a subcommittee that worked on, uh, a subcommittee that included a member of the Board of Finance, two members of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the commission subcommittee is chaired by Anne Santoro, and we had a report for about an hour on how they went about conducting interviews for groups that filled out applications to be considered for possible funding. And as that was just presented to the board last night, I've not had time to review. It's possible, as I listened to this discussion tonight, it's possible there might be some funds freed up. We're hoping that maybe we will be able to pull, uh, some items off our, uh, what do I want to call it, uh, it's gone out of my mind, the, uh, the big expenditure items. Like, for instance, we pulled off the garbage truck was, which was going to be replaced, that would qualify under public health issue. So we pulled that out of our long-range plan, that's what I was starting to think of. So we're hoping that we'll be able to perhaps pull off some other items from that list that would qualify under the funding, and therefore free up some money on the capital expenditure side.
Has there been any talk about replacement or repair of the Fairhaven Road Bridge?
No, that's not on there, and that has not been brought to our attention.
I would like to, how can I bring that to their attention?
Well, first of all, all the-
Or I don't know, excuse me, I'm sorry to cut you off, I don't know if it's on the-
All the app, the application period has closed for, uh, groups, committees in town. So the idea of the sidewalks and the idea that you just mentioned, those are things that could be brought to the attention of the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if that bridge replacement is even on the capital, capital list, which goes out five years. I'd have to check on that.
I thought when it first appeared to be a problem, three years ago, four years ago, that it would have been fixed by now, but, you know, I mean, because it used, you know, having the cones there for many years.
I remember that, now that you mention it.
I remember Blue Crabbin from that bridge, and, uh-
I know that they've got a lot of, they've got an extensive list now of no parking signs there. Um, I'll inquire about that and, uh, ask, when I get the information, if Mr. Mulholland will send out a memo to the commission. So we're just beginning to review those. Uh, there were about 30 that they recommended, uh, to be approved, but there's still a waiting list. And, uh, so it's possible that if you got together and thought about where you'd like the sidewalks, that that could be put in as kind of a potential suggestion.
I'd be happy to be on that.
If we could, if we could, uh, if we'd be able to then free up some funds.
I would be happy to, seeing it's in my neighborhood.
We were so excited to hear the FEMA zone, the FEMA flood regulations last night, but that got pulled, so some of the excitement went out of the meeting.
Is that the flood ordinance thing?
Yes, the flood regulations.
Is there a time limit on that?
No.
Just a recommendation, right?
Well, the chief is recommending that it's, take the same thing the zoning regs said, because it affects the beach areas, those three entries, and we want them to be cohesive. It's really housekeeping, though, we're not quite there yet, we'll get there.
I'm sorry?
Um, the Public Works Department is working on, um, a new, uh, garbage pickup policy. I thought we had quite an extensive policy, but apparently we don't. So, uh, a number of things coming to light, that, um, people want to have five and six trash cans, I can't understand why they can't have that many, and that they're a taxpayer, and they should be able to have as many tax cans as they want, et cetera. So we're reviewing the policy, uh, and, um, Joe Buggah, our Director of Public Works, is working on that, which will come back to the board. So if you have any suggestions, feel free. It's not that awful we get to talk trash. It's St. Patrick, St. Patrick's Day.
It is St. Patrick's Day.
And I didn't have a merrick ready.
That was good.
Um, we still have two vacancies that have not been filled for alternates to the Inland Wetlands Commission, so if you know of someone who's interested, uh, then there's an opportunity there, and, pretty important commission, I feel, in terms of our increased development in town. Um, a lot of building going on, and, as you're well aware- A lot of building going on, and as you're well aware, and I think protection of the inland wetlands, um, is very important. Uh, we also took over the ownership of the Riverhead Cemetery, which is, for those of you who might need a refresher, it's located over behind where Lulu's used to be, and now is the site of the Noble Gas, uh, project. It's, uh, it's behind that. And, um, there are only two people left alive who-
In the graveyard?
There are only two people left alive who were, who were directors of, of the cemetery.
How old is that cemetery?
Well, there hasn't been anybody buried there in the last thirty years.
So when was the first person buried there?
I couldn't tell you. It was before my time. However, Mr. Peck might know. I'll defer to him.
Would it have any historical value, or?
It does.
During the Civil War.
It was before the Civil War. There are stone, very, very fragile stones in there that are deteriorating. Uh, there's nobody, there's nobody left alive to maintain them.
I will just share the, the cemetery ladies were in my office this week.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we, we're on almost first name basis.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, uh-
Working on some-
Are there any plots left up there?
No, it's a closed cemetery. Uh, but there are some very historic stones there, and many of them, of course, old sandstone, stones and things. I know that, uh, Mr. Peck has been a frequent visitor there over the years, just as a member of the Historical Society. Uh, so I think that that's, uh, that's good news, because, um, you know, they're just a small, independent organization, and there's no money.
You can actually see it now, in all honesty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're gonna-
It picks up.
And you're gonna-
No, listen, it doesn't bother me.
It bothers me.
Does it?
Where's it at?
Yeah.
It bothers the cemetery.
It's right on the, uh, five ramp to ninety-five.
Next to the old Lulu's, the new, um-
Justice, next door, the new gas.
Oh, yes, 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 now I know where it's at, yes.
When you drive by, you kind of look at the terrace, and you see in the back, you know, you can see the summer fair, because they've taken all the brush off, but, I mean, it's early on in that project, so landscaping will-
It'll be taken care of, yeah.
But we've had very few problems there after about the nineteen eighties, when we had hobos camping out in there and pitching tents and leaving, leaving trash, mattresses that they were sleeping on. So, uh, so I think it is somewhat of a concern that it's so open now and it's visible. You know, we've been fortunate that we have not had much vandalism there, and so I think getting some cover there, particularly with more traffic being in that area with the new, new development project.
How do you share it, from your understanding, for the cemetery, the development should be put up in, who are I a gate for? I guess we stole somebody's, uh-
Does the cemetery have a name?
Riverhead.
Riverhead, thank you.
Hence, Riverhead Building?
No. No, no, no connection, no connection. Okay, so I think that that's, uh, that's about all that I have.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Okay. I just would hope that, have the trees been fixed at Stop and Shop? That tree plant is?
Conversation with an attorney from the director's meeting, and that development philosophy, and we can leave it at that. I think there's more work, uh, on the heavy discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Moving on, comments from the zoning board liaison to the planning commission. That would be Mr. Granitick, who is not with us tonight, so we will move on. Comments from the chairman. I really don't have anything tonight, other than may the luck of the Irish be with you. On a St. Patrick's Day, I can't believe I'm here. But anyway, luck of the Irish to Yukon, and, uh, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion adjourned.